Okay, I'd like to call this regular Cleveland Heights City Council meeting to order. It is Monday, 7:34. Addie, would you call the roll?
Maddox.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petras.
Here.
All right, no numbers to excuse. We do have an amendment to the agenda. Councilman Petras?
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to add ordinance 143-2024, resolution 144-2025, and ordinance or resolution 145-2025 to first readings for adoption.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of mending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. No minutes from the last meeting. Communications for the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to announce a couple of things that are going on in the city right now. Some of you may have already seen, but the third phase of the North Park resurfacing project is underway. Ron Yack paving began today. I hope that people found their ways to work in a way that was less interrupted than it could have been. But they'll be moving full speed ahead with the North Park from MLK to Delaware resurfacing project. Last year, we started sort of a three-phase resurfacing project for North Park. We went through Coventry to Delaware and repaved North Park between those streets. And there's also an ongoing, or maybe wrapping up sanitary sewer project from Arlington to Coventry on North Park adjacent to Lower Lake. And so, once that, once that project is complete, there's the expectation that they will finish and repair the road there as well. But it does look like that project has a bit of an overrun, so we may have to do a change order in order to deal with that. But once this is all done, North Park will be in much better shape for a while to come. So I'm excited about that, and I know a lot of people are as well. Once they are done with North Park, I believe the next step is to move on to Euclid Heights Boulevard. And that will have to be a two-phase project as well. What we don't want to do is cut off both sides of Euclid Heights Boulevard on either side of the median. So we'll be doing, I believe, one side first and closing that off, and then going one way in either lane on the other side of Euclid Heights Boulevard. That's also a long time coming. So that's one piece, and then we'll move on to the rest of the road program for the rest of the summer. Beyond that, I also wanted to note that we are sort of embarking on the project at Kane Park as well by the sledding hill. I think people sort of started in earnest doing some of the work over there today to clear it and get ready for the installation of the new seating and stairs area on the northern side of the sledding hill. And then on the southern side of the sledding hill, we'll be installing a new ADA accessible, much more accessible entryway into the park along that steep hill. Just a couple of things that we're working on. And with that, I yield back to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Don't the report of the clerk of council?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Well, we're here, public comment. We have 18. So that's great, I guess. We're gonna do three minutes for, first for agenda items, and then three minutes for general. When you come up, make sure that you state your name and the street you live on. Make sure that when the three minutes is up, you're wrapping up. Addie, go ahead and call the first person.
Susan Affraymson.
Hi, I'm Susan Affraymson, 38257. Many in the Orthodox community were against the recall and did not sign. They were afraid of retaliation, retribution from this government, and they refused to put their name on any list. Because when the mayor condones excuses and uses antisemitism, he sanctions it, and that intimidates. So last week, we were treated to Sarin supporters calling us haters while using the language that's used by terrorists to call for Jewish genocide, and trying to tell the black community that the Yiddish word for black means something other than black. That is what it means. Inflaming race relations, what's all that about? Some fear, not unreasonably, that violence may follow. What those just tuning into this recall effort need to see clearly is what the gatherers have seen all along. The problem is not a few offensive words. It's government sanctioned, our government, our First Lady, and our mayor, and that is intimidation. All should be welcome at this podium. No one should be intimidated. All should be able to receive equal city services. All should be able to advocate for improvement without having their lineage, morals, family, and intent ridiculed, questioned, and denied by city officials. The EEOC allegations, as well as Sarin's own excusing of his wife's comments, and the delay for getting our little garbage problem solved, shouldn't have taken over a year, show that this administration doesn't get that. There are other examples, but we only have three minutes. This was but the smoking gun. And I will leave it to those under the campaign to expand on the budget, the math, the late filings, the toxic work environment, and the legal exposures, and the unclaimed monies. I want you to focus for a moment on how inappropriate, disenfranchising, and discriminatory that language was. Fireings have already happened. Now, this is not just a Jewish issue, but it should not be an issue. City Hall should not be a toxic place, period. And it's that love for one's fellow and love for the city that motivated many to come out and stand up to right this wrong. So when the fringe Sarin supporters sing their silly ballads about mayor hate, it's important for those new to the conversation to realize how much more than just a few offensive words that this is about. It's why black people expressed embarrassment at the mayor's actions and couldn't sign fast enough. One even asked me for three pens. Members identifying in the LGBT community expressed just disgust at what's come out of City Hall. And the sentiment came from every neighborhood, every. It's what motivated so many to give up time, income, and energy to stand together against hate. We regret that it was necessary. How we wish the mayor understood the basic human right of access to government and the safety, that safety needs to be universal here in 21st century America. That's what this is about, and that's what united black, white, liberal, conservative, progressive, those of all religions, and those of none. This chaos must not be sanctioned, and this hate must not be allowed to continue.
Thank you, Susan.
Susan Wood.
I guess you can go beyond three minutes unless you're my daughter, Melissa Wood. I would just like to say, I have nothing prepared, and the only reason I'm standing up here is before, I came with my husband, and I was listening to the committee of the whole. And I would just, I was listening to Councilman Maddox talk to the rest of you, talking about emails, talking about perhaps inappropriate reaching out to the public. And I think you all know, I sent you all an email on Saturday, and I said, where's the agenda? And I got back an answer from a couple of you saying, oh, we'll put it up. We'll talk to whoever it is who puts it up. Well, the only reason I ask is because, per your email, to your followers, the agenda was up there, because people were talking about it. So the agenda goes out, and it's not on the city website. So I'm just saying, as my granddaughter would say.
Christopher Wood.
My name is Christopher Wood, and I live on Ed Hill Road. I withhold my address because I fear reprisals from certain thugs in this city. People seem to have forgotten why the city's citizens, against all the naysaying of the experts, decided to change the city charter and elect our first mayor. The city manager, hired by a do-nothing city council, had outsourced the single most important city department, housing inspection. This proved to be a disaster. Then she wanted to privatize our water service. At the largest gathering in the history of the city, the residents shot her down. No one was accountable. So we elected a mayor. By our city's standards, Mayor Sarin has done a very good job. He brought inspection services back in-house. Under his leadership, we made the transition to carts for garbage collection, decades after other cities. New developments are occurring in the most underserved parts of the city. Plans for the redevelopment of Severance are underway. A mental health unit was added to the metro clinic. At least lift service is being paid to maintaining our tree canopy, and thought is being given to how the city can survive global warming. Our city's quarterly information guide always featured a fancy house on its cover. Mayor Sarin unmasked the fakery by showing instead black children playing in the water. He stumbled badly in dealing with Cumberland Pool, but he righted himself. Cumberland now looks better than it has for years. His biggest mistake was in joining council to back Israel in its ongoing oppression of Palestinians. This has badly divided our city. We are about to pay needlessly for a recall campaign due to a soap opera at City Hall which has made Cleveland Heights the laughingstock of greater Cleveland. An unproven allegation of a hostile work environment is being used for pedo purposes by people running for mayor or a council. The Jewish community is outraged by alleged antisemitic remarks made by the mayor's wife. There are far more important reasons for outrage. Many of our residents have allied themselves with Ohio's fascist state government by accepting school vouchers so that their children don't have to sit next to black kids in school and can be infected with Jewish, or Catholic, or other religious doctrine. Using public money for private sectarian purposes violates one of the most basic American values. But even worse, a large and influential segment of our community backs Israel in its effort to eradicate the Palestinians. Dropping US-made 500-pound bombs on an outdoor cafe hosting a child's birthday party, withholding infant formula from those baby terrorists, without shame, even boasting, "The Holocaust was not supposed to hap-"
Mr. Wood, your time's up.
It is happening now in Gaza.
Tom Hudek.
Tom Hudek, Bradford Road.
You lift the-
Yeah, there you go. Can you hear me now? Yeah. Tom Hudek, Bradford Road. The other day, I was walking down Coleridge, and I came across this on the street, just a little past where the Kelseys used to live. It's addressed to those who want a recall. No name on it, but there is some verse which I'd like to read. So, "Oh, oh, Chris Quinn's full of innuendo. You need to calm down. You're being too loud." And I'm just like, "Oh, oh, 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 Josie. No, no, no. You need to just stop. Like, is it because the mayor's brown? You need to calm down." Well, that's all there was in this anonymous verse, but it shows exactly what's wrong. The volume of accusations against the mayor is far louder than the actual facts. What exactly is Mayor Sarin, our city's first black mayor, being accused of? Giving his wife too much City Hall access? And what she, not he, might have done as a result? Oh, and Mayor Sarin's also been accused of fibbing about what parts of City Hall he, the mayor, had access to. And now, it's reading employee emails, despite what most people know as a given. When you're on the job, your email belongs to your employer. On the spectrum of possible crimes a mayor could commit, these are all less than misdemeanors. Yet, Mr. Quinn of the Cleveland Plain Dealer famously doesn't see where race enters into this matter. Now, what are the facts concerning Josie Moore, the person behind the recall? The first fact is that Josie Moore ran for mayor against Khalil Sarin and backed out. The second fact is that later, she convinced people to elect her to council. Then she quit, less than halfway through her term. Now she's running a recall to remove Mayor Sarin, just weeks before he'll leave office anyway. Those of you on council know Josie Moore better than I do. But I think you'd agree, frankly, she's not that swift.
Susan Miller.
I'm unprepared. It's been a long time since I used to come here every Monday in 2015 so that we could have affordable water. But I was really curious about a March 3rd meeting when Ms. Russell introduced a text survey into the record. And so, I looked for it in the minutes, but I didn't see it, Addie. It was a public record that was introduced that night under new business. And I was really curious to see what it was. She showed it on her phone like this to Mr. Posh, and Mr. Kuta, and Mr. K- I'm not telling them anything they don't already know. So I wanted to see it, so I made a public records request in May, May 3rd. Well, by the time the end of June came along, I called law, and I said, can you give me an update? Can you give me some background, Ms. Garbo, on your efforts to get this, you know, text from Ms. Russell and share it with me as a public record? Well, Mr. Crumraine had requested it twice. I had requested it, but still, no text. And so, I said, well, I'll just email council. And lo and behold, I got a response right away from Mr. Posh. And what he sent was a picture of a group chat that included, was from Davida, sharing the text, which is not anything, as the mayor said, anything done by the city doesn't come from the city of Cleveland Heights. It comes from a big market research firm. So that night, the mayor told her, "Report it to the scam squad. Give it to our law department. Give it to IT." But by April 2nd, there was still consternation and arm-waving about this resident opt-in, resident survey that comes out via text. The city of Cleveland Heights was doing this. The mayor had spent $48,000 getting a survey. He said, "No." They said, "You must be, because I got a text." Well, I have the text here for the press, because Mr. Posh shared it with me. And in the group chat, there are several people, five people, and they are Mr. Petras, Ms. Larson, Mr. Cobb, Mr. Kuta, and Ms. Russell. Mr. Posh was not included. Somehow, he got the text and sent me a photo of it. I'm sorry. Mr. Maddox, you were not included in the group chat. Oh, were you? Oh, thank you for letting me know that. This has five people, so I was reading from the little icons in the top. But apparently, she did forward it to you. So you're in the group chat, too. So my time's up. I just want to let you know that I've made a public records request for the entirety of the group chat that's going on between council, except for maybe you.
Melody Joy Hart.
Hi, Melody Joy Hart, Monmouth Road. So the recall will be on the ballot in September, and will be certified thereafter, later in September. And that's a little bit more than three months before the mayor would leave office anyway. We've heard people sound the alarm that all hell will break loose if the recall doesn't pass, and the mayor will continue in office for three more months. About a month and a half into his three months, we'll know who will be elected the new mayor effective January. So I asked a few people about what they saw as the dangers. I heard from them about budget and staffing. One, budget, they said, "What's the great danger a mayor will pose by being in office?" It's not the budget. He has done several successful budgets. I worked with him on it, and I can tell you, he was competent. Now, that last year may not have been as easy, obviously, because he didn't have a finance person, which makes it much more difficult. Although, there was fault on all sides, including council and the budget. But this year, there's a full-time finance director again. This is no real reason for any difficulty, and certainly, having someone temporarily in office who has never done the details of budget would not be helpful. Staffing. People claim he lost people, and more people could leave. Actually, there's no evidence that's been presented proving that there was more losses during his term. However, I can tell you, having years of business experience, that when you have a new boss is what's gonna happen this year, when there's a new mayor, or if there's a temporary mayor, too. People will generally leave, and because, I quote, "The devil you knows better than devil you don't know." So people don't like uncertainty. So some people may leave because of the mayor coming in in January, or because of the new temporary. So you should be expecting it. It won't have anything to do with the current mayor. Communications. Okay, we can all agree that that's not his forte. We can all agree on that. However, he has said he'll have town halls to answer questions, listen to your beefs. So that's at least an improvement, but you could say that it's a little, too little, too late. Possibly so. But why stop him by kicking him out before his term's up? Another thing that could be impacted that most people didn't mention as often is development. There's an ongoing development which may have various deadlines and requirements that temporary fill-in from council would be unaware of. And for developers, a temporary fill-in would be disruptive. There will be enough of an adjustment to developers, our partners, in going to a new mayor in January without having a temporary fill-in as well to muddy the waters. I encourage people to think logically, and not to just listen to all the social media and media brouhaha, which is what usually media and social media prefer. You get more viewers, more likes, et cetera. Think logically, and vote no on the recall. You already got what you wanted. You didn't want him, right? You already got that. He's not running. So call it victory for you, and vote for a new mayor, and against a disruptive recall. Thank you.
Drew Herzig.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Mr. Mayor, and I don't know in which terms to address you. City councilors all take an oath of office, but some of you have repeatedly broken your oath of office by your continued violation of open meeting laws. The most egregious example is at your last meeting, when the law director had to repeatedly remind you not to have extended whispered conversations during the council meeting. But there are many other examples. In June 2024, some of you admitted to having conversations with other councilors about pending legislation. There are also emails that you have exchanged, and these are only some of the instances that have come to light. Now, tonight, you wish to make it more difficult for the public to access your emails, to detect your criminality. This is a little bit like closing the barn door after the horse is out. But I'm sure the ordinance will pass because you wish to place yourselves above the law. Apparently, the modest salary which you receive, that one of you complains about so frequently, is not enough to guarantee your integrity. Will the mayor's salary satisfy you finally? And this is from the group that dares to claim the moral high ground, that goes on about administrative overreach that boasts of its transparency. And you have the nerve to lecture us about gaslighting. You have cultivated your sense of grievance to the point that you could no longer see the real harm that you are doing. Your inflamed self-righteousness has blinded you to your tragic lack of integrity. Those of us who are not blind, who are not part of a mob, who can see the harm you are inflicting on the community, wish that there were more we could do than simply calling you out, whether with facts or with taunts. But the little we can do to speak truth to power, we will do. You are oath breakers, and you should resign.
Angel Fasolo.
Angel Fasolo, Ed Hill Road. Back in December, I showed up with a sign. It seems pretty inappropriate now. It started off telling Khalil he was the problem. The city knows, our neighbors know, most of the region knows, the media knows, we all know. I crossed out mayor. I suggested that Khalil resign. He's not going to. He needs our tax money in his paycheck. He needs legal support. And he needs to hold on to the little bit of control he's gonna have for a little bit longer. And he's gonna keep trying to take the city down more and more. So this sign's pretty outdated. Our outgoing disgraced mayor is now the sofa king. I guess I'm the sign queen. The recall isn't just a handful of people who are following Khalil. Over 4,000 people signed that. I understand not all of the signatures were validated, but there were far more wanting you, wanting him, out. I'm not wasting my time talking to this individual. He wanted me to not speak to him again. He asked me to not speak to him again. I kept speaking to him. And now, on my choice, I have no desire to speak to him. An outgoing, disgraced, first and worst mayor of Cleveland Heights. In December, he said he had a ton of prospects. Doesn't seem he has them now. And to not keep talking about him, I do want to thank all seven members of council, even the ones I do not agree with, the ones I don't always support, for actually passing the resolution, asking him to consider resigning, to consider a resignation, and to have him limit personnel decisions. All seven of you were involved in that, whether you were in person and able to vote in support of it, or you just co-sponsored it. So for that, I actually do thank you. I'd like all seven of you to reflect on what was in that resolution. Because immediately, he made some pretty unpopular and retaliatory personnel decisions. He doesn't respect any of the seven of you. Six of you have figured that out. One of you hasn't figured that out.
Marty Gelfen.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of council, mayor, law director, public. I'm here to speak about ordinance number 139-2025, an ordinance mending, well, anyway, it's about the emails. I heard the mayor on the radio, and he said, and I didn't have time to write it down, but I got the gist of it. It shouldn't surprise anyone that he would have access to your emails. Everyone knows that employers have the right to investigate and review employees' emails. And that's true, if you're the employee. Members of council are not employees of the mayor. You're the legislative branch. The mayor leads the executive branch. They're co-equal branches of government. Council has oversight of the executive branch. Council has the right to, now, the mayor, if he wants, can do a public records request, if he wants to see your emails. But the mayor should not have access to your emails. I'm not gonna say anything about the staff. The staff are the staff, and they work for the executive branch for the most part, unless they work for council. But council needs to, and I think you're doing that now, rein in the mayor's power. Because what you all need to understand, everybody needs to understand, is that you have power, the executive branch has power- the executive branch has power. You need to understand that power. You need to understand the limits of that power. And you need to understand that the executive branch and the legislative branch need to work together and talk to each other to make government work. So I urge you to, I know it's on first reading. I ask you to keep what I said in mind.
All right, that's it for legislative agenda items. Moving on to general. Geraldine Blair.
To the mayor, to council. My name is Geraldine Blair. I have been a resident of Cleveland Heights for 52 years. I have lived there all those 52 years, except for the last one and a half years after my husband died. I have paid my taxes, and I have kept my property up. I come to you with a complaint about a tree that is on my tree lawn and the roots. I come to you because I cannot get any satisfaction from the forestry department. In 2001, the city issued me a citation for uneven sidewalks. I paid that fine, had my sidewalks repaired, which cost me $2,000. Fast forward. This year, I am having trouble with my sidewalks again. I have pictures to show you the roots that has covered my sidewalks. I have no grass. I have called the forestry department. I was told the tree does not belong to the city. It belongs to me. And the only way they can help me if I have it cut down is that they could give me $2,000 towards the bill. My question to you. When I moved into Cleveland Heights 52 years ago, I was told that the tree lawn belonged to Cleveland Heights. Every spring, Cleveland Heights offered resident free tree service. And if you had anything that you wanted to do with the tree lawns in Cleveland Heights, you had to call Cleveland Heights Forestry Department before you could do anything. So I would like to know, when did Cleveland Heights change the policy that they did not own the tree lawn service and did not notify the resident? I have paid my taxes. I have paid taxes when I worked in Cleveland Heights. And now, they seem like they are just eliminating services, and I cannot get any help. And I am very, very angry. So I come to you with my problem because I need help with this tree that is on my tree lawn. And I thank you.
Mr. President, could I, just very briefly to explain, I'm not exactly sure what the forestry personnel told you specifically. But what I can tell you for clarification is that the city owns, owns the tree lawn. The property that is the tree lawn and the right-of-way and the sidewalk, the city owns it under state law. And longstanding Cleveland Heights law, the property owner adjacent to that section of the right-of-way from the sidewalk to the street is responsible for the maintenance of that area. That is longstanding Ohio law, longstanding Cleveland Heights law. However, I know quite a while back, there was some discussion among council members about creating some different policy in the city of Cleveland Heights. I think that they were looking at some sort of plan to assist homeowners in contracting for sidewalk repairs and those sorts of things. What I suggested to Cleveland Heights, to Cleveland Heights City Council in collaboration with the Director of Public Works, who made it very, very clear that if we were to change our policy wholesale throughout the city, we would need a sustainable funding model for that change in order to take on the responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep of those areas in the same way that we do for roads or streetlights and so on and so forth. Thus far, the council hasn't gotten back to that policy change. They have been focused on in other areas. But I know at some point in the future, it may come back up, at which point the people of Cleveland Heights might see a change. It's a legislative change that would have to happen.
I want you personally, or council members, to come. I want you to look at, this tree needs to be cut down. My sidewalk is beginning to raise up. It is uneven.
Could you give me your address?
My address is 1361 Vandermark Street. And I don't have the funds for this to do more damage to the sidewalk.
Just for some additional clarification, I know that forestry, in terms of their mission in protecting, maintaining, increasing our tree canopy, generally don't tend to start with removal, unless a tree is diseased or dying or dead. In that case, they should take another look at it. Like I said, I don't know exactly what they mentioned to you or what they talked with you about, but I'll make sure we take another look at it.
Thank you.
Yes, you do.
All right, and I just want to add one thing. Eddie, do you ever contact, okay. So what I'd like you to do is contact the Housing Preservation Office. And there is some money that has been set aside in the exterior repair program for tree removal. And I don't know how much is left, but I'm going to make sure that our clerk of council, raise your hand just for a second. So our clerk of council will get the Housing Preservation Office in touch with you to see if there are some funds available. And Councilwoman Maddox, did you want to say something?
Just a couple of quick clarifying questions. I wanted to make sure, is this the same tree that you originally went to court for in the first place? Is the same issue coming back, or is this a different tree? I'm just, just.
I didn't even go to court for the sidewalk.
When you paid the original fine?
I didn't pay the fine. I had the sidewalk repaired.
Okay, was it because of this tree, though? The same tree? Okay, I just wanted to, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Blair.
David Berenson.
Hello. I'm going to try to make up for things by going less than three minutes. I'm David Berenson, 3321 Sillsby Road. Lived in Cleveland Heights most of my life. And I'm sorry for not bringing my daughter with me to do another skit. I know you guys remember that. So a quick show of hands from council members, mayor. My fellow citizens, how many people prefer negative campaigning? No? No? Okay. How many prefer positive campaigning? We got a few, okay, good. So what is the most effective way of moving to positive campaigning? Instant runoff or ranked choice voting? It's proven to be an effective way of not only allowing citizens to actually state their preferences of who they want to vote for, but it also encourages candidates to not negatively campaign as much against each other because they might be able to get that person's second-choice votes, third-choice votes. But when it comes down to it, it is the best way for people to say what they want. I know when you were elected mayor, there was probably at least one other candidate that I might have felt was valuable that I couldn't vote for. Now, this year, for mayor and for council races, there are going to be a number of qualified people that I will not be able to vote for because I have to choose one. It's a forced choice system that most elections do, and we end up, or, yeah, poor, okay, yeah. Most systems do that, and we end up with sometimes really difficult people. We might never have had Donald Trump as the Republican nominee in 2016 if there was ranked choice voting. That's just one example, okay? Thank you very much.
James Bates.
James Bates, Grosvenor Road. Just as the work week began, and while the coffee was brewing this morning, we were once again bombarded with colloquial seren's, meral, malfeasance, and failures in leadership. The headlines didn't surprise us. They confirmed what far too many Cleveland Heights residents have known for years. This mayor's unfit to lead. Let's start with the latest insult toward intelligence, the unraveling scandal over his unauthorized access to city council's emails. Seren didn't allow, didn't follow the public records request process to seek emails. Instead, he took it upon himself, without transparency or oversight, to dig through a year's worth of communications, weaponizing city servers like his own private surveillance network. And then, with a straight face, he tried to justify it as normal. Let's be honest, what Seren did would be called abuse of power in any other democratic institution. And it's not just creepy, as one councilman said. It's undemocratic, unethical, and surreptitious. But the culture of misconduct doesn't stand at digital espionage. Seren is now under review by the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor for allegedly violating wiretapping laws after allegedly placing a laptop in the law department during an investigation involving his own wife. And the new communications director knows nothing about it. That's not leadership, that's paranoia, panic, and ignorance. He's managed to create his very own Watergate incident. How befitting. Meanwhile, our former communications director was abruptly fired and replaced with Francis Collazzo, the very person who organized a bizarre public letter proclaiming there's no hostile work environment in city hall, a letter signed by 18 whole people, no doubt. And by now, we have all seen that less-than-stellar performance she gave us last week's meeting when put under media pressure for answers, much like the very man who hired her, clueless. It's as if Seren thinks propaganda can replace public trust. But here's what's worse. Chance, a seasoned professional with over 25 years of experience, says her reputation was dragged through the mud. And for what? For daring to operate with integrity in a city hall infected by dysfunction and ego? And perhaps the most damning, the complete failure to manage over $475,000 in federal grants meant for violence prevention in our community. These weren't just funds. They were lifelines, tools to prevent another life from being lost to gun violence. The DOJ awarded Cleveland Heights two major grants, and years later, nothing. The city's excuse, no one was supposed to, didn't know what to do. The grants were neglected, the deadlines missed, the accounts suspended, and the opportunity wasted. Staff scrambled, Mayor Seren went MIA, neither responding to DOJ emails nor providing basic leadership. The $175,000 grant, gone. And the $300,000 one, hanging by a thread. You know, but we still have plenty of time, you know, to investigate alleged Ohio meetings acts violations that go nowhere, right, Mr. Mayor? And, you know, there's also a process for that that can be followed. And it doesn't take a year if you were serious about that. But you're not. You'd rather smear us all as racists until you finally found out that that tactic didn't work either. Cleveland Heights deserves better than a mayor who hides behind emails, dodges accountability governed through paranoia. This isn't leadership. This is a one-man crisis, and it's long past due. It's time to now protect, stabilize, and restore our community. Thank you.
James Williams.
Hello, what's going on? Mariah Carey. Somewhere I know that there's a place up above where no more hurt are struggling, free from all atrocities and suffering. And still I feel the unconditional love from one who cares enough for me to embrace all my burdens and let me be free to fly like a bird, take to the sky. I need you now, Lord, to carry me high. Don't let the world break me tonight. I need you right here by my side. Sometimes this life can get so cold. I pray you'll come and carry me home. Thank you.
Mike Unger.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Unger, 2596 Fairmont Boulevard. A proud former city council member. I think I like being on this side of the podium better, better than that one. Look, Mr. Galfin did a good job earlier in his remarks of describing the separate branches of our now relatively new form of government. Last year, the executive branch of that government decided to target four sitting council members for investigation. President Kuta, Vice President Russell, council members Petrus and Larson. Fortunately for me, they reached out. They retained me to represent them. Rest assured, taxpayers, it's being done on a pro bono basis, no charge to anyone. And in terms of the mayor's legal counsel, he did two smart things, in my view. Number one, he hired Flannery and Georgie Alice, which is a highly experienced, very well-respected local law firm. Here in Cleveland, he got his law director, Bill Hanna, involved. And everybody knows Mr. Hanna is top flight. All of us rolled up our sleeves. My clients directed me to roll up my sleeves, get to work. And I am here this evening because there are now claims that my clients somehow did not cooperate with this investigation. And that is simply not true. As I understand it, the mayor has claimed publicly that my clients failed or refused to cooperate with the investigation. And again, that's demonstrably false. His law director knows that his outside lawyers know what I've written to them. I've gotten no response. My clients have voluntarily cooperated, notwithstanding multiple legally firm infirmities associated with the so-called investigation by the executive branch of the legislative branch. Now, to be sure, I've asked my clients not to make public statements until the matter is concluded. But it appears to me, because I'm not living under a rock, that the timing of all this appears to me to be far more related to the mayor's own highly-publicized problems than what's actually in the best interests of our city and its residents in terms of spending taxpayer money and moving forward. Be that as it may, I want to be clear on the record that my clients continue to remain committed to resolving this and committed to assisting the investigation in any way that we possibly can. As we discussed, there were multiple meetings. There was proposed extremely helpful legislation by way of either a resolution or an ordinance. I can't remember. But Mr. Hanna and his colleagues prepared it, offered it for commentary. We reviewed it, we commented on it. He did it in a collaborative, collegial fashion, just as you'd expect. And I thought we were well on our way to solving the problem. So I am hopeful that we, I am still hopeful that we can do so. And thank you all for listening. Nice to see everybody again.
Jason Davis.
Jason Davis, 2313 Lee Road. I'd like to provide an update to the Cumberland Pool safety petition following the announcement of the new rules for the 2025 season. of the new rules over the 2025 season. The update via social media, like many of the online commenters, left me disappointed. In particular, the new requirement for two forms of residency adds barrier to what should be a fun and accessible public pool. The core concern of the safety petition was simple: To allow U.S. Coast Guard-approved life vests for anyone. The revised rule now allows puddle jumpers or equivalent devices in the preschool lane. This update felt like it was made specifically to address my niche concern while ignoring the broader public safety issue. National water safety guidance is clear and encourages life jackets for weak or non-swimmers around any open water. As I've talked to residents, I've come to realize that our community is caught between two competing goals: On the one hand is excellence in water safety, and on the other is excellence in swim education. The former encourages life jackets, the latter discourages them during lessons. We must do both. I was fortunate to meet with Andre and Heather to discuss the reasoning behind the new rules, and it was a very positive meeting, and I'd like to discuss some of the highlights. Andre described this year's changes as a stepping stone, a first step after years of stagnation. Large changes mid-season are disruptive for lifeguards and pool operation. The deep end was cited as a reason to not allow life jackets more broadly. However, I pointed out other pools saw this by simply restricting life jackets from the deep end. The two proofs of residence were a response to non-residents causing disturbances. A grace period to this policy is currently in place. Paper check-in and re-verification of residency with each entry was chosen due to lack of terminals to allow registration of non-pass holders. But I suggested a QR code at the desk for mobile self-registration through the Activity Reg, which is the system that currently manages season passes. A color-band system is under discussion to visually indicate swim competency. Right now, retesting is at lifeguard discretion. The rewritten rules aim to address recurring problems more clearly and are more specifically and narrowly defined. In the meeting, we shared a vision for a safe, fun, and intergenerationally-inclusive pool that serves Cleveland Heights residents. I was left with confidence that more positive changes are on the way. One meaningful change that might go unnoticed to most patrons: The preschool lane now has in-water, plainclothes lifeguards. Now, this is excellence in water safety and a possible path forward for excellence in swim education as well. If these in-water lifeguards could evolve into in-water coaches, demonstrating techniques to parents and providing informal instructions as situations arise, I believe this would foster a more collaborative and supportive environment. National guidance tells us that learning to swim is the best thing for water safety. However, becoming a strong, competent swimmer takes years, not days. We must create a safe, nurturing environment to foster a love for swimming, not a fear of drowning. In closing, the stated purpose of the Cumberland Pool's safety petition has not been satisfied by the new rules. That said, I am not here to let perfection be the enemy of good. These are meaningful changes and a first step to advocate for—sorry, excuse me. I invite everyone to share their vision at cumberlandpool.com, sign the petition, even if you oppose the broader allowance of approved life vests. If you—you can do that while still sharing your opinion. Leave a comment and see what other community members have to say. Together, we can build a safe, fun, and inclusive pool we're all proud of. Thank you.
David Popovker.
Good evening, city council. David Popovker, 3384 Blanch Avenue. Last week, a speaker expressed a desire to be able to say "globalize the intifada." So that phrase carries weight and history with it, and it requires delving into the history of what the word "intifada" means. Historically, the first and second intifadas included widespread violence, such as suicide bombings, shootings, attacks, flame bombs, all the sort attached to this word. These painful chapters in history left thousands that and countless more wounded. To globalize the intifada can be easily understood as many as a call to globalize violence. Is that really what we want echoing in our civic spaces? Is that what we want to hear? What makes this even more concerning is that the individual who said this is supposedly a substitute teacher in our schools. Do we want someone who's in charge of educating our future generations to spout such things? Do we want it to be that they—now everyone has access to the internet, they go on the internet, they see, "Oh, look, that's my substitute teacher. She said 'globalize the intifada.' That must be good." No, we don't want that, especially with such language. It's not even—it's not politics. This is dangerous. These type of—this type of language is used by terrorists. Jewish tradition teaches us something profound. In the Gemara, it speaks of a time when the descendants of Amalek, the archetypal haters of the Jews, will teach Torah in public. This seems contradictory, firstly because there's a commandment to destroy Amalek, secondly because—why are they teaching that which they sought to destroy? The point was because they themselves were taught. So there is incumbent upon us to educate others, not only just call people names and throw words around. Our educators should be open to discussion, should know what they're saying, and talk with the people that they want to—that they're calling names. She said, "Oh, if it looks like a white supremacist, it likely is one. You want to come talk about it? Let me know. You can—I mean, I can contact you if you want." So I'm not asking for punishment. We have a right to freedom of speech. What I am asking for is education. We need to make it clear what these type of words can mean in the communities. We have people around here who have lived in this, who have possibly even lived through the intifadas. We need to make clear that it's not okay to spread such ideology, especially from those who are teaching our future generations. And it's our job, and it's actually your job, all of you on city council, as the servants of our civil servants, to make sure that it is publicly known what the implications of such speech is. It's publicly known that when we hear those words, we're not hearing, "Oh, peaceful protest." We're hearing calls for violence, we're hearing calls for terrorism. We don't want that here, we don't want it anywhere, not Cleveland Heights, not Ohio, nowhere in the U.S. Thank you, have a good night.
Barbara Sosnowski.
Good evening, all. I am Barbara Sosnowski, 3863 North Hampton Road. And I am speaking on behalf of my kind of non-formal role as a beautification advocate in my neighborhood in the Noble area. And I've spent at least 11 years tending Noble Roanoke, a little mini-park, Delmore Orchard on Delmore Road, and the various landscapes at the corner of Noble and Monticello. I've moved mulch, weeded, picked up trash. And in beautifying Noble Road in 2014, around 70 pots were rescued from behind the old dairy lot to be placed in spaces along Noble Road. Kim of Deluxe Landscape filled and watered these pots for 10 years. Her contract was canceled this year, and now we have unwatered, dying pots and hanging baskets. I do challenge all of you to kind of look at the condition of these pots. I look at them because I'm tending these daily, my spaces. What was once overflowing and watered regularly, almost daily, except when we got good rainfall, it has now been an untended and dying pot situation. I hope that they are replanted. This has always been a much anticipated venue for all of the Noble neighbors to see these planted and tended. So I just wish to document my disappointment this year in the change of contract and what seems to be the lack of care. Thank you.
Sima Popovker.
What kind of city would I like to live in? Another person asked this question themselves last week. I want to live in a city where everyone respects each other's opinions and seeks to engage in nonviolent dialogue. I want to live in a city where no one promotes the indoctrination of children to support terrorist groups. I want to live in a city that does not take the casualty numbers of terrorist groups like Hamas and accept them so easily as fact, using it to justify the killing and inhumane capturing of so many civilians. I wish to live in a city where no one wishes to participate in the mass slaughter of innocent people masqueraded as a righteous uprising and called by the name "Intifada." We all have a duty to represent ourselves, and this is me representing myself in what I see as right. On the topic of the mayor, we also all have a duty to ourselves to be the best spokesperson for our inner selves—for our inner beings. When a person becomes elected into a public position by these people, by us, they represent more than themselves, but also the will of the people. I do not claim to know or understand anyone and cannot know the thought process behind anyone's actions. But I truly believe that when an elected official needs to make an apology for whatever reason, it should come immediately and should come with a strong and complete condemnation of actions. So many of us are not satisfied with your response, and so when you can no longer satisfy the will of the people, you are no longer qualified to lead them. Thank you.
Karen Lash.
Karen Lash, Monticello Boulevard. Didn't come with prepared remarks, but I'm good at off-the-cuff. It's clear you have no shame whatsoever. Every week, every day, there's something else. The fact that you have let this money slip through our hands—the grants, the one grant that's gone, the other grant that nobody's done anything about, letting go a woman who was doing an excellent job in communications and trying to ruin her reputation, and putting in your wife's best friend in the position, aces. What else? Oh my God, there's so much. It just—it keeps going on and on and on. And people think that, "Oh, what's the difference? He can stay till the election." Every day, we're finding out something more. The putting a camera in the law department, all these things. "Oh, bringing the couch to Kane Park, really classy move. That was really extraordinary." It just goes on and on. We cannot wait until January to get rid of this man. He's done so much damage, and he continues to do more and will continue to do more until he's out. Please, God, show the people, have the people whose eyes are closed open so they can see what's really going on and do the right thing. Thank you.
Sarah Popovker.
My name is Sarah Popovker, and I'm here today to urge this council to take a clear and moral stand, adopt the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance IHRA definition of antisemitism, and formally recognize that the slogan "Globalize the Intifada" is not free speech, is incitement to genocide. In the October 7th attacks, Hamas used rape, torture, and execution not just as weapons of war, but as tools of terror against Jewish—and not Jewish, by the way, civilians—women, children, and elderly. These are not disputed facts. The Jerusalem Post and international investigators have confirmed the systematic sexual violence that took place. There's a report coming out tomorrow, it's called the Dina Report. Look for it. And yet, in a month since, we have seen the same group responsible for those atrocities leading a global propaganda campaign under the banner "Globalize the Intifada." Let's be very clear: If the October 7th massacre is what intifada looks like today, then to globalize it is to export rape, slaughter, and antisemitic violence worldwide. This is not protected protest. This is a call to repeat October 7th in Paris, in New York, God forbid, in Cleveland. This is not free speech, this is incitement. The IHRA definition of antisemitism, adopted by dozens of democratic governments, helps communities to draw a clear line between legitimate criticism of Israel and calls for violence against Jews. It gives us the language to name and reject hatred, especially when it tries to hide behind slogans. By adopting the IHRA, this council would join a growing movement that refuses to let antisemitism shape our public spaces, our campuses, or our streets. I urge you to adopt IHRA to ensure our city is equipped to respond to antisemitism with clarity and consistency. Condemn "Globalize the Intifada" for what it is: Not peaceful advocacy, but a direct echo of genocidal violence. We must not wait until words turn into actions. We've already seen what that looks like. Thank you for listening.
And finally, we have Ali or Alec Popovker. Can't quite read it.
Good evening, mayor, council. You know, "globalize the intifada" sounds terrible, but at least it's more honest because the real poison is the lies about the Jewish people that are spread all over this community by my own neighbors. You know, the Ashkenazi Jews are not the real Jews, real Jews are black. You know, we control the media, we control the banks. You know, Jews stole land from Palestinian people. Israelis are targeting Palestinian children and women as some here state in council, in the City Hall. We have terrorist propaganda, Nazi terrorist propaganda in Cleveland Heights City Hall. There's no investigation, there's no task force on racism. I mean, there is, but it doesn't include the Jews, as I found out when I tried to raise the questions of antisemitism. Apparently, it's only for George Floyd and black people. That's what they told me. Where's the Jewish councilman that represents this historic Cleveland Heights community? Once, Mayor said that that would make sense, but I guess that fell on deaf ears. The mayor also said that him and his wife are against antisemitism, according to IHRA, but the question is, when did the mayor or any of you study anything about the IHRA definition of antisemitism? We're all experts about how black-being black is a crime in America, but apparently being Jewish is not. Jewish people are white colonialists, they have oppressed everybody because of all the wars. This is the kind of—that's the real poison, not "Globalize the Intifada" by a schoolteacher. "Globalize the Intifada." I've spoken to many of you, including the mayor, about starting a task force that does deal with antisemitism specifically, and we were talking about the beginning of this year. I know there was financial issues. Let's take those steps, and I hope to see somebody Jewish here sometime soon. Thank you, God bless you.
That's all.
All righty. Well, thank you all very much. We do appreciate the public comment section. Now, we're going to move to first readings, consideration for adoption. Eddie, you want to—
I have ordinance number 139-2025 on first reading, and ordinance amending Chapter 105 Public Records to add a new Section 105.04 to prohibit the review or access of city email accounts of employees or elected officials without consent or lawful approval pursuant to Ohio Public Records Law, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
All right. I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Councilman Larson.
Thank you. My public records request confirmed that Mayor Sarin did indeed access my emails twice in 2024, looking at the years 2023 and 2024. He did not use the public records request process, he queried the information directly from the city's servers. Executive and legislative branches should be required to use the legal process established by the Ohio Revised Code, and that is to use the public records request, which we all can do. So I'm in support of this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman Cobb.
Yeah, so I drafted this legislation, and I'm quoting from a Channel 5 interview, which I have not read, but I just saw the written part, and the mayor is quoted as saying, "It's no secret whatsoever," end of quote, that he's looking at emails. Quote, "This is not something council members are unaware of," end of quote. Well, I'll speak for myself. Well, I'll speak for myself. I was unaware that my emails were being looked at. Back in May of this year, I sent an email to our IT director asking, under what circumstances could council members' emails be accessed by anyone other than the member? Are you able to confirm that no council member emails have been accessed without their permission? And he responded to me, but he really didn't answer my question. I sent a follow-up, trying to determine whether my emails had been looked at, and I didn't get a clear answer, so I made a public record request and did discover that the mayor had looked at my emails. Now, if you'll recall, from Mr. Unger, who gave some remarks earlier, there was an investigation launched against four council members. I was not one of those council members. The mayor engaged the law firm to do an investigation as to whether these council members were allegedly using their personal emails. So why are you trying to look at my city emails when I'm not part of the investigation, one? And second, it's city emails, not personal emails. Also, you have a law firm engaged to do your investigation. Why isn't the law firm the one that is pursuing the records either from our personal emails or our city emails? That law firm sent me a letter on August 20th, 2024, asking for my documents. Within 24 hours, I provided every document that they asked for and said, "If you need further information or follow-up, please contact me." Again, I responded within 24 hours. I'd never heard another word from that law firm since then. So to say that, you know, that he needed to do some ongoing investigation, and that's why he's looking at my emails or any council's email, it doesn't sound accurate to me. To allege that council members are not cooperating, as you heard Mike Unger say earlier, is false, and particularly in respect to me, it's a falsehood because I have cooperated and provided every record that they asked for. I'm outraged that one elected official feels that they can look at another elected official's emails. Do you think you have the right to go look at the judge's emails? This is outrageous, and just because you can do it doesn't make it right. There needs to be a guardrail, and that's why we're going to hopefully vote on and pass this legislation tonight. These abuses of your power and authority need to stop.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilman Petrus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Imagine if Governor Mike DeWine quietly and personally tapped into every single email of legislators in the State House and then said, "Trust me, this is just part of my job." We would all say that that's an abuse of power, and the same principle applies here in Cleveland Heights. City Council is a co-equal branch of government, and the mayor should use the same records request process that every other resident, including members of this council, have to use. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor, do you want to comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I find it odd, to be honest, that council members would talk about an abuse of power when this began with an email being mistakenly sent to your sole employee indicating that council members had been engaged in behavior that is unlawful under Ohio law and our local code. And when your employee came to the administration for assistance with that concern, our responsibility, and my responsibility as the mayor, to ensure that the laws are faithfully followed, to ensure that the laws are enforced, that responsibility, that duty under our charter, provides the implied power of investigation in the same way that all of you have asserted this implied power of inquiry, based on your role as legislators, members of a legislative body. You don't enforce. You legislate. On this side, in this branch, we enforce, and that requires investigation. Now, Councilman Cobb may not have an understanding of what that means because he hasn't participated in this role. That's understood, and it's understandable that you wouldn't have experience in this. But it is disconcerting and unfortunate that you use terms like "abuse of power" when the role, the only role, that is envisioned and empowered to investigate the kind of misconduct that was, I don't know, that we were alerted to by your employee, that investigation must take place in the executive branch. And the idea that an investigation into potential misconduct would be required to go through a public records request process is absolutely asinine. But I know that this council does not see itself as requiring the oversight that it seeks to impose on others. I disagree with you. I think that just like with every other branch of government, there is a requirement for oversight of your activities as well. It's not a simple case of curiosity that can result in a public records request or some sort of political movement that results in a flood of public records requests, most of which are terribly crafted and require a great deal of law department time to address because of how poorly crafted they are. But in this case, the investigation into your potential misconduct, this is the result. Your legislation is the result of a council, a majority of a council, that seeks to insulate itself from scrutiny, that seeks to insulate itself from the type of oversight that you think is appropriate for us, but not for you. But you have a veto-proof majority, further emphasizing the need for robust set of checks and balances on a council that really is beholden to none at this point. So you will do what you wish. I believe that the city of Cleveland Heights, and certainly the administration and the government, will be worse off for it. I think that the idea that you have additionally lumped in the employees of the administration, further reducing the ability for any mayor to investigate misbehavior, to, without making a public records request, apparently, the permissions that you seek will certainly inhibit investigations into the law director, whose permission you would need in order to investigate them. This is bad law. And so I feel bad for who comes next, who will have to deal with the types of reactionary legislative actions that you are undertaking that are clearly the priority for all of you, as opposed to the wide variety of other legislative acts that you could be taking that will directly and tangibly benefit the people of Cleveland Heights.
Councilman Posh?
I find it very suspicious, the accusation made of Councilman Cobb, that essentially he doesn't know what he's talking about. I think that's ridiculous. He's the lawyer in the room. I also find it highly suspicious that this investigation happened just when I was appointed to council, and it's been over a year, I believe, right now, and nothing's happened. So why is all this being run through the mud when you apparently have this evidence? Go take it to the common police court and get a judgment. I think maybe you should do that.
Any other council comments? Yeah, go ahead.
As I stated in committee at whole, transparency, I truly believe, is for everyone. And I stated to my council colleagues that over a year ago, I had concerns about private meetings when this came up and our ability to have conversations around risk mitigation and ensuring that they don't happen. I'm not voting for anything tonight because of any actions just based on the administration. I'm voting tonight on accountability for leadership, period. Long before any of this bubbled up, I have been shouting from the rooftops that we had issues with transparency and accountability from this council and this city's leadership. I have begged this council to talk about policies and institute legislation that will put guardrails around our city's leadership in terms of public meetings, in terms of our private emails, and none of that was hap, it was completely ignored. Let's just be honest about it. It was ignored up until it was politically convenient to then attach it just to the mayor. That's my concern tonight. A couple of weeks ago, I voted for an investigation because I felt that there were questions, the same questions that I have for this council. Somehow, that's being conflated as Anthony is leaning on one side or another. So let me make this clear to everyone in this city. I don't make decisions from this dais based on my feelings of anyone. I am accountable to God first. I'm a pastor. My wife and I take that extremely seriously. I don't make a single decision for votes. I stand on what I believe in, and I stand foot-footed, and I hold on to that dearly, and I don't care what anyone thinks about it. So when I hear that my council colleagues have stepped out of line and had private, secret emails, I want to know what happened with it. When I'm hearing that there might have been things that happened in the finance department, I want information on it. The fact that there are two separate sets of rules for the administration and council has been my problem the entire time. This should not have taken a year to pass any legislation concerning emails or transparency on this council. And then tonight, in the middle of a public comment, I'm hearing that six of my colleagues would possibly have their own private doggone text message group. In the middle of all of this, nothing has changed. So again, I'm telling this entire city, it is time for accountability from all of our city leaders, not just when it's popular or when half of us are up for election, but when it was right last year, when we found out that three of you, at least three of you, had an illegal, secret meeting and decided to discuss it with the administration and the law department. And I understand that my, our former councilman was a part of that conversation, but that had nothing to do with me as a colleague and how that impacted my work in this city or the residents. I've been told that every decision I've made on this council is because of my emotional feelings about either this council president or this mayor. I stand with what's right. I don't care what color they are, how old they are, or what their title is. Transparency should be for all. My colleagues should not have had any illegal, private meetings, and they shouldn't have waited a year to pass legislation to have a stopgap to stop any of this from happening again. And the idea that we're going to sit here and lump this all on this mayor is hypocrisy at its best. And if anyone doesn't believe me, look at what I've been saying the last year about this council, about how we do business in and outside of the public light, and what we need to do to set parameters around this. For some reason, we have treated risk mitigation like it was a bad word up until it was time for accountability for the mayor. Where was this when the council president was having illegal meetings and was bold enough to put out an entire agenda in his private email? Where was the consistency then? Where was the consistency from his two colleagues down there who sat on the housing committee with me and met with him and had those meetings? Nothing has happened in this public. The residents don't even know the conversations that have happened with former Councilman Unger and you all and the mayor and the law department. We have no idea what adjustments are being made, who is accountable to who. No one on this dais has even admitted that anything wrong has happened, even though three of you lied to the public when I asked you directly from this chair. We need to stop posturing because so many of us are running for office and start passing legislation to run this city and to make sure that we are doing city business in the light of day. This has to stop. Every time I come in here now, we're passing legislation because someone's running for office and we see or hear something else that he's done, but not a single one of us has held ourselves to account as well. That needs to stop tonight. I don't need an investigation to tell me that an illegal meeting happened. I got the agenda, I read the emails, and my staff person reported it as well, so let's not play games. The leadership in this city needs to start operating with integrity and in the light of day. And I'm not just talking about the mayor, I'm talking about everyone on this dais. And if you can't do that, then you all need to quit. But I am fed up with going around in circles with people, having meetings behind my back, conversations I don't know about, and then I come into a council meeting and everything is just being passed with no discussion. It is clear things are happening outside of the light of day. And if I find out that that text message between the six of you actually exists and you've been discussing council business, I expect you right here in this dais to explain yourselves and what the hell you've been talking about. Because I am tired of the surprises I'm hearing. I'm hearing it on the news, I'm hearing it from mayor, I'm hearing it from council. I don't know what's going on, but I know it's not happening in a council meeting in the light of day, and that needs to stop. So I'm going to vote on this legislation. We're going to continue to clean house and tighten up transparency in here. But if you can't do that, if it's not going to be for all, then quit today. I have enough of this. Everyone's investigating everybody, but no city business is getting done, and I don't know who's talking it to when because nothing is being recorded. This needs to stop. It shouldn't have taken a year to pass legislation. I've been begging this council to have this conversation to prevent any more illegal meetings from happening, and now we're magically doing it because we're attacking it to him. It's hypocrisy, and it needs to stop.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice President Russell?
I've been kind of quiet on a lot of these issues because I think our city needs to heal. I think all of the back and forth needs to stop. I think we need to move forward with getting the city moving forward in the right direction. But first of all, let me address this. I have not had any illegal meetings with nobody, period. Not one person. I have not had any illegal meetings with nobody, number one. Number two, the text message that Ms. Miller was talking about came to every employee, every resident in Cleveland Heights had nothing to do with legislation or anything regarding this city. When I showed the text message that came to me, I asked one question with that text message. Was the city doing a survey? That's, that was my question. Look at the, look at the tape. That was my question. Was the city doing a survey? Because I received a text message stating it came from the city that a survey was being done. When I asked, I got all kinds of responses, but no one told me if a survey was being done or not. Look at the video. So I just want to make this very, very clear. I was not involved in any illegal meetings, and the text message that she referred to tonight was a text message that every resident did. It had nothing to do with nothing regarding city business at all. Any residents could have gotten it. And the only reason Mr. Maddox wasn't on it, because he didn't inquire about it. Simple as that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Vice President. First of all, thank you, Councilman Cobb, for putting this and other legislation together. You did a lot of work, and we all appreciate, well, I think most of us appreciate it. You know, I don't think there's any question that the mayor should not be going through elected officials' emails. Public records request is the way we do business, and that law is in effect for a reason. You have to justify what you're asking for with specific dates and topics, and you can't just go rifling through communications. I don't remember the mayor asking for our emails. I don't remember the mayor telling us that he was going through the emails. I don't think it happened. And for the record, council leadership has, as our attorney, Mr. Unger, has said, we've cooperated every step of the way. We've had several meetings with Flannery and the mayor. Russell was there, I'm sorry, Vice President Russell, myself, the law director. We were on time, even the one time the mayor was 35 minutes. Even the one time the mayor was 35 minutes late for the meeting, we were there on time at $350 an hour, by the way. We answered the questions, both oral and written, in a timely manner, and we agreed to legislative remedies that were brought up in those meetings. Our pro bono attorney has not heard one word in the last six months. He has advised us not to say anything until the investigation is complete, and I don't think that's unusual at all. You wait till the investigation's complete, and then you talk. I'd be glad to do that when it happens. Bottom line, the mayor— there's a lot of things the mayor thinks are okay that a lot of us don't think are okay. And to me, this email safari is yet another thing that the mayor has done that is clearly not okay. And, you know, the mayor and I have had this conversation many times about his interpretation of things and mine. So with that, Eddie, why don't we call a roll call vote?
Cobb?
Aye.
Kuta?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Russell?
Petrus?
Aye.
Posh?
Yes.
All right. Sorry about that, guys. Next, I have ordinance number 140-2025 on first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 121.05 Rules and Regulations relating to the mayor's authority over city property and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
Eddie, is there an amendment to this?
Yes, I believe so. We would need a motion. It was just to, I believe, change chapter to section route.
All right. Can we have somebody bring that forward? Go ahead, Councilman Cobb.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the references in that ordinance, that the word "chapter" be taken out and in substitution, it is "section." Where I referred to Chapter 105, it should be Section 105.
Second, the motion.
Was that accurate, Law Director?
Section 2.
Yes, Councilman. I think there was a second part of the amendment that was discussed, which was to add a new section 2 with language repealing the existing Section 121.05, and I think that the clerk has prepared that language.
And if I can amend that motion to include a provision repealing the prior version of that section.
Second.
Can we read that into the record, the actual language for the—
For section 2?
Yes.
It would be, "Section 2, the prior version of Section 121.05 as it existed heretofore is hereby repealed in its entirety."
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That amendment passes. Now, a motion for the—
We have a motion in a second.
You're right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Okay. Next, I have ordinance number 141-2025 on first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 105 Public Records to add a section 105.05 to prohibit the use of city social media accounts and email systems for political messaging and limiting their use to official informational purposes, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Larson.
Just like to say that this legislation is necessary to make certain that the residents of this city can trust that the information they're receiving in their social— in their emails or wherever is informational and relevant to the services that they deserve to receive. Transparency.
Any other discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Petrus.
I think that it goes without saying that our official communications should not be personal or political in nature, and so for that reason, I support this. Thank you.
And— yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't—
Go ahead.
Again, I felt this was a necessary legislation draft to make sure that our social media systems are not being abused, and there have been some questionable use of our social media going back to late last year, and I received lots of email communications expressing unhappiness with the email blast particularly that had been going out on Monday that are not informational only. And this is intended to address that. Most of our laws that we have, they predate social media, and so we need to have some ordinances that catch up with the 21st century.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Mayor, did you want to comment?
I got maybe a question, maybe some other comments, but the question is just, I guess, for the purposes of example about why this sort of process, sort of reacting to your emotional responses to the messaging that the administration sends out, is a flawed way to legislate. Just a really quick question, for example, does this apply— because I think a reading of the text of this legislation certainly doesn't exempt this— does this apply to holiday wishes? Does this apply to, you know, the sort of—it's not included in the list of those particular things that any of these communication methods can be used for. So holiday wishes, "I hope you have a happy Fourth of July," that kind of thing, that would be more personal, it's not specific to the services of the city. Is that the kind of thing that you're also hoping to prohibit?
I mean, Councilman Cobb, since you're the author, do you want to speak to that? I don't even— you don't have to, but I'm—
Certainly not, and you should know darn well what is permitted and not permitted. And let me clarify that, maybe you don't know that because I think you live a different reality than the rest of us.
Okay, okay. So then I guess maybe the councilman can clarify how the text doesn't prohibit that, but I'm sure you guys are going to approve it before having that explanation. But I would say this, and I think we do live, I guess fundamentally, in different understandings of what it means to have a mayor. In 2019, when the strong mayor, as I think the campaign said once and never again, but the elected mayor with executive authority, which is, you know, known as a strong mayor, was sold to us as the leader of the city, sold to us as the conductor who leads the orchestra, who tells the musicians what to play and how. That was from CEM members Tony Kuta and Michael Bennett, that particular analogy. And so it's understood that when you have a strong mayor, when you have a mayoral form of government, that if you are actually anticipating that that mayor is behaving as the leader of the city, then the messaging from the city, as, you know, outlined in our charter as the official head of the city, the mayor and the administration's perspective on a wide variety of things can be communicated to the public using official channels. Say, for instance, if the federal government decides that they are going to ramp up deportations, they will not accept, you know, documentation, green cards or visas, and they are simply going to lock people up. Your legislation prohibits the city, through any official communications, from speaking about that. Your legislation would prohibit the administration speaking about the mayor's and, by extension, the administration's policy preferences. I think that you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, and I don't anticipate that you'll reconsider, but that's the different reality that we live in, Councilman Cobb, the one where you believe that the mayor does not speak for the city or speak for the administration. And I live in a different one where I believe that in order to create a strong Cleveland Heights under the form of government that we selected in 2019, the mayor has to be empowered to do exactly that, as opposed to being undermined for their entire term by a council that wishes to be the only voice of the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Posh?
This is a quote from City Communications. "This recall effort is not about my performance in office, it's not about ethics, it's not even about disagreement. It's a political maneuver rooted in misinformation and fueled by personal ambition." You know, Mayor, if you say that personally and get that out to your base, free speech, you should say that. Your personal channels, it should not be said using city channels.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? All right. You know, somewhere in between, you know, you get elected and four years later, and you have no accountability, and then in November, four years later, that's all that happens in those four years. Somewhere in between that and what the mayor said is, there's some truth there. This is not anything goes for four years. It's not—it's just not, and I think that's more the way you look at it than the way at least six of us look at it, because you just—you do so many things that are just mind-blowing. And, you know, most of the time, I don't say anything. I really don't. But—and you have this amused look on your face, like somehow that must mean you're right about everything. Just look amused and be sarcastic, and that's the way things are going to work. The strength of our democracy is in the checks and balances we have between two fully empowered branches of government. This guy wants four years to go by, no questions asked, he's the boss, and that's the way it is. And if you really want to look at what Citizens for Elected Mayor said, we talked about separation of powers and checks and balances and accountability and responsiveness over and over and over again, and that's what's happening today. You know, yeah, we would rather spend time doing other stuff, but you're keeping us very, very busy with these shenanigans, and I fully support this resolution. Go ahead, Eddie, call the roll.
Posh?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Petrus?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Kuta?
Yes.
Cobb?
Aye.
Next, I have ordinance number 142-2025 on first reading and ordinance amending ordinance number 27-2025 to provide for the resurfacing of the eastbound rather than westbound portion of Euclid Heights Boulevard between Cedar Road and Coventry Road in the city of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Seren.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
I live in the Cedar Fairmount neighborhood. I drive this stretch multiple times every day. It is a terrible road, and so whenever it was announced that the westbound portion was going to be repaved, it made no sense to me, and I'm genuinely very grateful to the administration for reconsidering that. The eastbound portion is in much worse shape, and so I'm really happy to hear that that's being done. If I remember correctly, previously, whenever I brought this up to the Public Works Director, she said that the other portion would be resurfaced next year, and so I could be mistaken there, but I think that that's what I remember her sharing. So presumably, the westbound portion will be resurfaced next year. So thank you to the administration.
All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number 143-2025 on first reading and ordinance calling an election to be held September 9th, 2025 upon the question of the removal of the mayor from office and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Council President Kuta, Councilmembers Larson and Posh.
Eddie, real quick question. We added these to the agenda, so we don't have to do anything other than— okay, got it. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we need to have a second?
Second.
All right, very good. Any discussion? Yes, Councilwoman— Larson loves to go first.
The citizens did the work on this recall. The Board of Elections validated the signatures. They had enough for this to come to council, and this recall will happen on the September 9th ballot as we vote this evening. I'm definitely in support of this legislation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilman Posh?
As each day goes by, the need to recall the mayor becomes more urgent, and too much is at stake for this to wait until his term ends. There are many reasons I'm supporting the recall. The first reason, our mayor continues to use misinformation to hide things from us in the community. This is serious and dangerous, and I'm sick of reading these headlines in our newspaper. Cleveland Heights Mayor Caught in a Web of Lies. Cleveland Heights Mayor Misled Public About the Report on Wife's Conduct. Every day, there's some new story coming out disparaging our city. Today was the article about the Peacemakers grant. We got the grant, but we didn't get the funding because we didn't have the leadership experience required to get that work done. The second reason involves our staffing stability. A week ago, the mayor fired another director. This was an established senior employee who had lots of institutional knowledge, and that knowledge is now gone. Our employees are scared. Morale is at an all-time low. This is because of—we— this is because we lack leadership. The longer he stays on, the more people we're going to lose, and we're going to have less capacity to do the necessary work. This is an ongoing problem, and it will continue until he's gone. In the case of the recently fired director, his administration made a huge communication blunder that's likely going to cause the city to defend yet another lawsuit. It's my opinion this is yet another example of bad leadership. The mayor is not up for reelection, and he's under the threat of recall. He should not be making any major operational or personnel decisions until a successor is determined. The third reason, I feel our next elected mayor is going to have a major operational challenge to overcome. One of them will be the go-forward budget. We can't have a budget processed like we did last year. I am hopeful Khalil Sarin is out by then. It's been said budgets are an organization's roadmap. We can't have another year with an incomplete budget, frustrated by due process. Keep in mind, we still don't have audited financial statements for 2023, and we've been told we have capacity problems which will delay audited financial statements for 2024. The sooner we get these kinds of issues fixed, the better. If the mayor resigns or is likely recalled, President Kuta leaves council and takes on the short-term role as mayor until the election. This gives the city time to jumpstart the planning and budgeting need for our 2026 budget with our staff, and I'm confident in Tony's ability to fill that role in the short term. If the mayor stays in place, these liabilities continue until he's gone. I'm supporting the recall along with 4,400 people who signed the petitions.
All right. Vice President Russell?
I am just—I'm supporting the legislation based on the recall numbers and the residents being able to sign the petition. So the people have spoken, so I'm supporting the people.
Councilman Petrus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to quickly share with residents that the charter states, "The council shall call an election upon the question of the removal of the mayor." We do not have an option here. The signatures were certified by the Board of Elections, and the charter stipulates that it's our responsibility to call for this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mayor?
The people who got petitions signed and talked to press organizations primarily took unfounded, unsupported, unproven accusations in order to sensationalize— imagine things that happened in City Hall have been successful at getting enough signatures to put a recall election on the ballot. Councilman Petrus is right that it is the obligation— Councilman Petrus is right that it is the obligation of the city council to place this on the ballot or to call for the election. Obviously, there is some glee in the room, and that's sad commentary. I think that the amount of patience and the ability for some people to wait until ambiguity or uncertainty is resolved, say, for instance, through an investigation into a hostile work environment, or a safety threat, or bullying, or the direction of employees by a non-elected, That investigation took place, and the investigator found that none of those things happened here. Now, whether or not a news organization decides that they want to say that speaking those truths is misleading in some way, well, that's sad commentary on the state of our fourth estate, certainly here locally. Now, there are specific reasons why the people who circulated those petitions were requesting that people sign them, specific reasons outlined in the petition itself. One of them is almost ludicrously explicit in that it is accusations against the mayor. Not proven accusations, accusations against the mayor means that we should recall this Another reason that's outlined has to do with last year's budget process, where, I guess I'm being accused, what is it, incomplete budget is the terminology that that people supporting this use? Now, in mid-December, when council voted down the budget that was introduced and passed a three-month budget, the people that I had working in finance, Willie Phelps, myself, I'd say Donna Laurie primarily, and Erlene, worked really hard to make up for the failure of the interim finance director to provide a budget, as was her responsibility and mine. In attempting to make up for that, we produced a budget that council passed with no amendment save the amendments that I brought to the council for the addition of capital projects, because council did not want to collaborate with me on the determination of what those capital projects would be. I was told in no uncertain terms that asking for your collaboration on that was inappropriate. And so I stopped, took a step back, and I provided the capital projects that you all funded. You hired an accounting firm to go over my numbers. Now, admittedly, all of our numbers are estimates when we are predicting the future, and those things are subject to change. So when I provided you an estimate, for instance, of the end of year balance that was produced by Andy Unetic, when I provided that to the council for the fund balances, as you requested, produced by Andy Unetic, who all of you have a high opinion of, you dismissed it, and then later you dismissed it as inaccurate. But it was a projection, and that projection changed as the situation on the ground changed. And so I provided you with updated financials as those situations changed. And you are using this process and a great deal of work in a crisis. Some of that crisis admittedly is my fault, and I take responsibility for that. But you use that process as support when just as easily you could decide to look at it as, yeah, there was a failure in the process of creating that budget and providing it to council, and the mayor stepped up and attempted to correct it. And ultimately, what we wound up with was a budget that this council passed unanimously with virtually no changes. Now, people can vote for this or vote against it for whatever their reasons are. And again, council does not have a choice on whether or not to call for the election. This is perfunctory. But in this moment, there will be a conversation about whether or not it actually makes sense to include this kind of disruption at the end of the fourth year of a new government with the implication that I would do anything other than what I did last year, or the year before, or the year before that, when it comes to the budget, insisting and doing a lot of the hard work, even myself, to produce information that you needed and relied on in order to pass a budget. Even the flawed process last year, there's more information than council had pretty much ever received before this new government. But there will be a longer conversation, opportunity for an actual debate. I do hope that at least some of the people pushing for the recall will stop blatantly lying about my record. And if we can achieve that, if we can speak honestly and truthfully about what's actually happened over the last three and a half years in this city, at the very least, I hope that enough people won't be fooled. In any case, council, do your duty.
All right, any other council comments? All right, I'll just say, first off, yeah, it's it is unfortunate that more than 4,000 of our residents want to recall the mayor. I mean, that it's come to this, that they're that fed up. That's what's unfortunate. But they have they have their reasons, but I'm equally disturbed by the mayor and a very small handful of residents characterizing the recall as undemocratic. I find that just that's the mind blowing thing for me in this moment. First of all, the recalls in the charter, you know, the thing we swore to uphold when we raised our hands in January 2022, and again, in some of us in 2024. And then there's the First Amendment, which has five parts to it, but I want I want to talk about three parts, the freedom of speech and the freedom of assembly. Well, that happens right here every other Monday. And, you know, we always want you to speak your mind here. The vast majority of the time, I believe, it is done in a very respectful way. But the part about petitioning the government for redress of grievances, can you get more democratic than that? And that's what this is. What could be more democratic? And recalling a public official is exactly the kind of thing that Citizens for Elected Mayor wanted to put squarely in the hands of the people. And I applaud those who are exercising their constitutional right to hold their government accountable. For 100 years in this city, it was up to city council, seven people, actually, really four, because just a majority, to appoint a mayor and a city manager. Four people, four to seven people, made those decisions for 100 years. And now it's in your hands. I mean, what we have now is the very essence of democracy. So let's go ahead and vote on this. Addie, roll call vote, please.
Cobb?
Aye.
Kuta?
Aye.
Maddox?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Next, I have resolution number 144-2025 on first reading, a resolution amending resolution number 012-2025 for the purpose of authorizing the expenditure of an additional $5,263.92 under the agreement with Frank Novak and Sons Inc. to furnish the labor material and equipment necessary for sandblasting, painting, and related services for the purpose of repairing the Cumberland Pool, repealing resolution number 012-2025 in its entirety and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved. Second.
We do that a lot. You got that, Addie?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 145-2025 on first reading, a resolution amending resolution number 242-2024 for the purpose of authorizing the expenditure of an additional $18,284.69 under the agreement with SCG Fields LLC to furnish the labor material and equipment necessary for the public improvement of a new synthetic turf soccer field at Dennison Park, repealing resolution number 242-2024 in its entirety, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stopped by Dennison on Saturday, I believe, and the field is looking incredible. They're doing a great job at replacing that, and I look forward to it becoming available to everyone.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, here.
So I'm really proud and happy about this upgrade over at Dennison. And so I just wanted to take another brief moment to thank Mike DeSenzio for all of his work in in making sure that this happened. He's been really a driving force and an institution in Cleveland Heights and Parks and Rec. So just wanted to take a moment to thank Big Mike for for making this happen.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Now we're going on to second readings.
I have ordinance number 131-2024 on second reading, and ordinance amending Chapter 105 Public Records of Part 1 Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights by adding Section 105.03 Rules for City Emails and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
We do need a amend motion to amend on this one.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make an amendment, and hopefully the law director will correct me if I'm wrong on this, in respect to Section 50, Section 105.03 subsection C, this should read, "The mayor and council members are prohibited from using private email accounts to conduct city business and shall exclusively use the above referenced official city email accounts when conducting city business through the email medium when practical and subject to the provisions of Ohio Revised Code, Section 149.43." Period. That should then be followed by the remaining sentence, "City employees are prohibited from using a personal email account when conducting city business." So I'd like to make a motion. Is that not how it should go?
Would you like me to read what I have just?
Yes, if you would.
I have section C. It's "The mayor and council members are prohibited from using private email accounts to conduct city business."
Point of personal privilege, I'm sorry to, I apologize to interrupt. I need to exit a bit early, and I just wanted to thank you for your hospitality this evening and, you know, beg your forgiveness for my early exit.
Yep. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Mayor, before you leave, I'd like to apologize for my remark earlier, where I said that you live in a different reality than the rest of us. That was unprofessional, and it was uncharacteristic of me to make such a remark. So I want to apologize to you for that.
So I have, "The mayor and council members are prohibited from using private email accounts to conduct city business and shall exclusively use the above referenced official city email accounts when conducting city business through the email medium unless use of the official city email account or system is impossible or impractical."
I like that better.
Mr. President, point of inquiry, does the law director have an opposition to including the sentence, "City employees are prohibited from using a personal email account when conducting city business," that was included in Councilman Cobb's draft?
I don't have an objection to it. It didn't seem to me that that was consistent with the intention of the of the legislation as a fundamental matter, but I don't have an objection to it. I did want to clarify that the last word that Ms. Ballister read was impracticable rather than impractical.
Okay, that's, I was.
I'm pretty sure I said that, but maybe I didn't.
You may have, yeah. That's why I'm clarifying.
Slightly ambiguous. Go ahead.
Is there a way that we could add a word that's inaccessible to that when email is inaccessible?
Sure, I think inaccessible is fine.
In place of what word?
Well, add it as.
Impossible, impractical, or inaccessible.
Inaccessible.
Yeah, because it applies to.
At the risk of reinforcing people's feelings about me already, I don't know that that reads right. So unless use of the official city email account or system is impossible or impracticable or such system is inaccessible, if it's important to add that, that would be fine.
I see, or such system.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so then I have a question. Are we reincluding what Councilmember Pash stated?
Yes, but with with the law director's wording.
It's Councilman Cobb's motion.
Oh, well, I think we, yeah.
Someone's going to need to give me that that additional language that we're putting back in. I apologize. That Councilmember Petrus read.
It's your motion.
I didn't write it down. Do you have it handy?
It was from the draft, and it says, "City employees are prohibited from using a personal email account when conducting city business." I will leave that up to Councilman Cobb to decide whether to include that into his motion.
I think we should include it. It doesn't hurt.
Okay, so again, sorry, I'm reading. What I have currently is, "The mayor and council members are prohibited from using private email accounts or to conduct city business." Where is this going back in? I apologize, but I need someone to tell me exactly where you guys want this.
That's subsection C. That's that's going to start as the first sentence. "The mayor and council members are prohibited from using private email accounts to conduct city business and shall exclusively use the above referenced official city email accounts when conducting city business through the email medium." And then.
Unless use of the official city email account or system is impossible, impractical, or such system is inaccessible. Period.
And then, "City employees are prohibited from using a personal email account when conducting city business."
And so they don't have an option if it's not accessible or if it's. What I'm suggesting is maybe you just add them to the entire provision.
Great.
Since they're being treated the same.
Mayor, city council, and staff members.
Okay.
So the mayor, city council members, and employees.
Yes, everybody's treated the same.
Is this why they call it sausage? Sausage making?
Sausage is delicious, though.
No. We're subject.
Is there a second for this motion?
Well, I think she's going to read it again. Are we are we there yet?
Okay, so, "The mayor, council members, and city employees are prohibited from using private email accounts to conduct city business and shall exclusively use the above referenced official city email accounts when conducting city business through the email medium unless use of the official city email account or, wait, hold on, sorry, is impossible, impractical, or such system." "...is impossible, impracticable, or such system is inaccessible."
Very good. Thank you for being so nimble. So do we, do we...
I second it.
Yeah, we have it. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Thank you. That's why they pay you the big bucks. Any discussion? All right. Oh, yes.
Yes, just again. I wish this hadn't taken over a year to put this in place. This was part of the issue that could have been resolved in terms of risk mitigation with this council. Several residents have blown me up since I spoke a couple of minutes ago. So let me give you some clarification to help, and then you can decide for yourself. On May 6, 2024, at 9:26 a.m., Tony Cuda from TCuda@MSN.com forwarded an email to Councilwoman Russell. In that email, it says, "Gail and Jim are legal counsel." These are several agenda topics. Our legal counsel is the first. We decided to revisit this issue at a later time. The issue for me is timeliness and loyalty to council's priorities by the law director. Jim's argument was that staff handles many issues. Gail offered Led Safe as an example, but that is not an example of council-initiated legislation. My argument stands. Bill handles the majority of council-initiated legislation poorly. Our own legal counsel will take hours off his play. The issues of timeliness and loyalty could be alleviated by having our own legal counsel. You know that thing we just decided to just do? Staffing committees is the second thing. We all discussed a replacement for transportation tonight. The transportation committee person. We discussed the replacement. May 20th, we will make the appointment. We will repeal mayoral appointments to transportation and ES committees in June if necessary. Again, private emails definitely sounds like city business to me. The third topic, inquiry. Pass ordinance in June. City business. CRC, review and special committee of the whole work session in June to decide how and when we will proceed. City business. Budget. Decide on process by June before we break in July. City business. Councilman Posh is on the agenda. Leave it to him to defend himself. Who knows what that means? Facilities use agreement. The director, direct mayor to enter into facility use agreements. That's definitely city business. And then Jim's housing initiatives. STR, residents first, Melody's legislation, and the tenant bill of rights, all of which were discussed in a private meeting while I sit on the housing committee. So when they tell you there was no illegal meeting, I just read the agenda and the dates. Three of them met, forwarded to Councilwoman Russell, and all of that is city business. Don't let them blow smoke up your behind and tell you that I'm doing this because I'm being vindictive or just because I'm cool somehow with the mayor. Accountability is for all. I expected an investigation when I had questions about the finance department and what he did, and I had questions about them. And people in this community and them pushed back and said, "Oh, Anthony's just being angry." No, Anthony's holding everybody accountable, just like I said that I would. So don't let the people on this dais tell you that nothing happened. I just read the agenda. It's posted all over social media. My staff and my team just shared it. You could ask that man, our council president, what this was if it wasn't an illegal meeting. The man that, if you recall, this mayor will not become your mayor but can't do business in the light of day. That's what I'm protecting this city from. I am not just an angry black man. I was elected to do business transparently and public, and that's what I'm doing. This council should have passed this legislation last year when the council president decided to have this illegal meeting. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? This is on the amendment.
Amendment, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? All right. The amendment passes.
Council President, you guys already did the amendment. That, this was discussion further on the...
I'm sorry.
Adoption, which I do have a motion and a second for.
Right.
So now we need a vote on the actual adoption.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I thought you just did it on...
I just said that was a vote for the amendment, and now we're going to vote for adoption. And, and that has been motioned and seconded.
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on the legislation? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And now we move on to old business. Crossing my fingers. No new business. I mean, is there a new business? Sorry, new business? All right. Wonderful. Councilmember comments? Go ahead.
More of a question. Is there anything the council would like to discuss in terms of how we're going to move forward with this? Are we still going to be in denial that illegal meetings were had? Are we still going to play stupid? When are we going to actually discuss risk mitigation that I've been asking for a year? I brought it up in old business several weeks ago, and I've completely been ignored. On record and in front of video, I'm going to ask you again, when will council discuss its own risk issues and how we're going to manage our own processes to make sure that what happened already doesn't happen again? Or you guys are going to continue to ignore me and act like it's not a problem until the mayor does something?
Well, you heard our, I mean, just from me, my point of view, you heard our attorney speak that... No, 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 no. You're not talking now. I am. You heard our attorney say that when the investigation is over, we're ready to talk. And, and I don't know why this has taken a year, but, you know, that's, we've participated every time we've been asked. So I'm, that's, that's when I'm going to talk. I'm going to follow my attorney's advice, who, by the way, very succinctly stated that the Open Meeting Act was not violated. So anyway, any other, where are we at now?
Comments?
Comments. Any other comments? Go ahead, please.
Yes, so I did apologize earlier. I'm not sure the mayor's accepting my apology, but I'm so frustrated with, frankly, his response to everything that caused me to lose my cool to the, so I'm sorry for that. But his response to me really wasn't a response. And this pertains to him looking at my emails, my city emails, when I'm not part of the investigation, when I have fully cooperated with the attorneys. When he tells the media and that it's a, that's not a secret, that we all know that our emails are being read, well, it was a secret to me, and I think President Cuda said that it was a secret to him. I think he also alluded to his, his employees, that he has the right to look at emails. Well, we're not employees. Not, not to beat a dead horse, but this is just continued deflections and misrepresentations without him ever directly answering questions or... So I'm, I'm sorry, it is, it is extremely frustrating. But let me be clear, I have never used my personal emails to conduct city business. Since all of this came to light, we, I, all of the council members have been, to my knowledge, super diligent about using our city emails to conduct business, being very careful to, to tell us not to respond, not to hit reply all when someone does, when someone does send an email. The, in this, the reason for the delay in this email legislation that we just passed was when it was introduced, it was done at the same time that the investigation was initiated. And I thought it was purely political to interject it, and I committed that as soon as that investigation was done, that I would proceed with hearings in the Administrative Services Committee on it. The investigation has never been completed. We've never gotten an invest, never gotten an explanation from the mayor as to why he hasn't concluded the investigation. I suggested that he was keeping it open for a political purpose, so he could continue to say that, that, that council is doing something improper rather than getting to the, the truth of the matter. This email legislation was brought forward tonight because it seemed appropriate to do it in connection with all the other changes that we were making to Section 1.05. So that was the reason that it was brought forward tonight. Thank you for letting me ramble on there. Done.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Yes, go ahead. Please, President Russell.
I am so tired of the hate. It's just so hard to sit here and see the residents tear each other apart over one side or another. We got to start to heal, and we got to start to really put the city first. We really have to stop. The mayor has to stop. Everybody, I mean, no matter what side you're on, we got to calm down, and we got to move forward. It's very hard here, sitting here, to see us tear each other apart. We're neighbors. We live together. We're on the same street. But I want to reiterate again and again and again, I have not had, not one time, Mr. Maddox, I have not had, not one time, a secret meeting. I have not been in a secret meeting or a meeting with other council people. First of all, I'm too busy because I have a job, I have a mother, kids, and everything else. I don't have time for all of that. So, so you hear it from me, I have not been in a secret or so-called meeting. Number two, back to the email of the six people, that text message went out to residents all over the city, not just to me. It had nothing to do with council business. When I got that email, the subject was up about surveys. I simply asked a question, was the city doing a survey? I never got a definitive answer. I was told to take it to the county. I was told to take, I actually was told to use my own, did I give them my social security number, being funny? That had nothing to do with anything pertaining to this city at all. Everybody, all residents got it. Whoever got it, got it. And I showed it to my council members to verify that I did receive that text message. So when I, when you didn't get it, because I didn't forward to you, because you did not even inquire about it, you were not concerned. So that's why you were not on it. But my other colleagues, they wanted to know what kind of survey it was, and I made sure they, they had it, because it seemed like I was the only one on council who might have received that text message other than other residents in the community. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was very clear on that. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Council President's report. First of all, thank you, Mike Unger, for, you know, taking this job on and, and you haven't gotten, you haven't gotten much cooperation, but we do appreciate your hard work. Craig, thank you for, you know, leading on all these pieces of legislation. And your hard work and, and, and your measured, I mean, you're like the Clark Kent of council. And I, you know, I, I mean, I appreciate the apology, but my God, if anybody doesn't need to apologize, it's, it's you. I do appreciate your measured approach and very calm demeanor. Our next scheduled meeting is August 4th. Thank God. So everybody, you got, you got about four weeks. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:56.